May you produce with your favor health and blessing throughout this region. Let Fergus Falls be a city on a hill where it shines and brings light and hope. Use the very agenda, the very routines of what we do to bring freedom and grace and newness and compassion and partnership and friendship. We ask this in the name of Jesus who laid down his life for us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's Monday, June 4th, 5:30, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I will call on Andrew Bremseth. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
If hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Darren. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. We have no bids to award this evening's, and we have no petitions and communications. Item G is the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packet, there's also a copy being displayed on the board right now. If any member of the council has any items they would like to remove and discuss separately, we will do that. If not, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Brent, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, item number one is the first reading of ordinance 69-7 series amending city code 2.20 boards and commissions. We will need that to be introduced this evening.
I'll introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the HRA to submit a small cities development grant. Andrew, did you want to begin that discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. Tonight with us is Michael Olson from the HRA, and I'll just call on him to quickly address the program and what the funds would be used for.
Perfect, thank you.
Welcome, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, thank you for allowing me. My name is Mike Olson, I work with the Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County Housing Authority. Just a little background on the Small Cities Development Program Grant. The last grant that we worked with, we started surveying in the summer of 2014. We worked on a couple of different neighborhoods. The neighborhood that ultimately was awarded was the neighborhood in Fergus Falls. Stanton Avenue was the south boundary, Seventh Avenue was the north, and it ran from Vine Street over to Buse. In the two years that that grant program was open, we assisted 17 homeowners. $327,043 in Small Cities Development Program Grant money from Minnesota deed was used in that area. $150,000 in leverage money was used. That's money that came from city funds, HRA funds, rural development funds, and Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. And an additional $78,000 came from private homeowner funds for their rehabs. So for that neighborhood, over the course of those two years, we did $555,786,000 in homeowner rehabs. I'm here tonight asking for the council to approve a resolution for the HRA to start the surveying process again now in 2018. We've identified a neighborhood for residential rehabs that would run from Channing Avenue to Vernon and from Oak Street to Arlington. In addition to the residential rehab, we would also ask that the HRA work with city staff to come up with a commercial component to this application that would consist of Lincoln Avenue from Union to Freiburg. That's an additional request to what I had in my first residential. We are offered three components really that we can work on rehab activities. There's a rental rehab component, a commercial rehab component, and a residential owner-occupied component. So through the surveying process, based on what we find for interest in any of the components, we would continue to work with city staff to define neighborhoods where we have the most impact, and then ultimately try and provide the information we need to get a successful grant written.
So, Mike, the commercial from Union to Freiburg on Lincoln Avenue, that's part of the same grant application?
Correct.
Say that again, so there's three components?
Three components.
Commercial rehab, rental rehab, and owner-occupied rehab. Okay. And they all fit within the same grant? And could you just let the public, let the council know, give us an example of, like, on an owner-occupied, for example, what's eligible, what's the typical loan? What do people use these for to rehab their houses?
Sure, sure. The typical owner-occupied rehab has a maximum grant application, can be $25,000 per project. The monies that are borrowed to homeowners for a owner-occupied rehab are borrowed out on what we call a deferred loan. So all of the deed monies provided to an owner-occupied project are forgiven at 10% a year for 10 years. No interest, no payments. If the title changes on the property, a repayment would be due on any remainder. So if a homeowner takes advantage of the program, stays for five years, sells the home, the first 50% would be forgiven, the remaining 50% would be paid back to the city of Fergus Falls, because the city of Fergus Falls would be the grant receiver, the HRA would be the administrator. Any of those monies paid back then would be reborrowed in the city of Fergus Falls, typically within the same boundaries, but primarily just making sure that they're used for the same activities.
And then, one other question, the commercial component, how, is that retail, is it?
Any commercial property within the boundaries of what we'd establish. So we'd look primarily at both sides of Lincoln. If we get the interest level there and we can get that map established, we would come back to the council and we would ask for a designation of what's considered a slum and blight district. We have to designate that district to receive that rehab funding. Commercial rehabs can be a maximum of $35,000, I believe, and deed money can cover 70% of the rehab up to the maximum. So the owners would be required to have a 30% match. Same forgiveness period.
We don't have to declare that slum and blight real loudly, right?
We don't have to, correct? Not tonight.
Okay.
Let's get through the surveying process first, see where our interest is, see what we find, and then we'll approach again.
Sure, sure. I mean, I like the program, I just don't like the name.
Absolutely. We don't either.
Thank you for this work. It's good for us to have that pool. What's the total available for this next round with this, in this area? Do you know?
We don't know that for sure. Generally speaking, somewhere between 20-some applicants usually are awarded. The maximum Small Cities Development Program Grant can be $1.4 million, and no single activity can be more than $600,000 in funding. So if we look at two separate activities here, an owner-occupied and a commercial, we could potentially apply for up to $600,000 in each activity.
In each one?
Correct.
And this bid, $550 last, did you say $550 in the last round?
Last time we applied for 20 rehabs at $20,000 each. So we applied for $400,000, and we used $327,000 of that grant in that neighborhood.
There was $555 total investment in that neighborhood, is that correct?
So along with the small cities money, we work with Mahoubi Atwa, Rural Development, Minnesota Housing, the local HRA, et cetera, to pool any leverage resources that we can. So our average grant from Minnesota deed might be $20,000, but our average rehab might be $35,000. And that additional $15,000, all of those additional leverage monies are really what helps the grant application become more competitive.
Okay. And then how can the city best cooperate to not only publicize it? And maybe we do, we send flyers out, or any, I don't know, or they do it through you? And also to help residents, I'm thinking of people who have a more difficult time applying. They may have some funds they could use, but they may be, let's say they're aged, and they're not as, it's not as easy for them to start accessing forms and doing things. Are there helps for those people to do that with your office?
So the survey, when we start this process, there's going to be two components to that. We'll start, first of all, just with a one-page flyer that'll go out and it'll introduce the program. We'll say that the HRA is working with the city of Fergus Falls to write a grant for this neighborhood. It'll have some boxes to check with what the household income is, and then we'll ask them just basically to check a box that says, "If grant funds become available, I would be interested in participating in this program." Sign it, give us a phone number, give us an address, get it back to the office. Depending on the results of that initial mailer, which to be completely honest with you, oftentimes the mailing these days is, you know, these papers come from people they don't know, and they just don't get responded to, unfortunately. So the second component would be walking the neighborhood, banging on doors. And we'll get some results from that, and we'll just keep at it until we find, you know, the goal would be to take this large map that we've identified tonight and chisel that down a little bit. The smaller map that we can ultimately apply into, that provides the greatest impact, will give us the most competitive grant. So if we find pockets within this map where we get a lot of responses, that's where we'll focus our attention.
Okay.
And, you know, I guess in looking ahead, future-wise, as long as Minnesota deed has Small Cities Development Program Grants available, you know, we'll spend two years in our neighborhood, and then we'll come back and visit with city staff again and say, "Okay, where next?" And just keep working our way around. We've had a number of small cities grants in Fergus Falls from the start of this program in the 70s, you know, up until our last one, just completed in 2017.
And then just one final question, Your Honor. You know, we do spots, sometimes there's something called spot zoning, or trying to zone a certain area, and I notice there's a block here. But in terms of the blight designation, do you ever do spot blight designation?
We can, yeah.
It's not outside of the legalities or your work?
Right.
So if there was a property or something that really needed something, it's possible to somehow get that moving through your work?
We would probably look at other funding sources for an individual, you know, one specific site, but if we have a neighborhood where we have, you know, blighted conditions that we really want to address a certain block or two, then we should look at mapping that and working through that process.
Does that apply to commercial too? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Michael? If not, someone will offer a resolution to that. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor of the resolutions? I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Item number three is a resolution approving the Legacy Parks and Trails Funding Application for the Glacial Edge Trail. I'll call on Ryan Miller.
Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. I am here following up on my introduction to this grant application from the April 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting. I explained at that time that we are looking at the fiscal year 2020 funding application through the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission for legacy dollars that would be applied for, for the Glacial Edge Trail. We are ready to get the application together, but there are a couple of items that are required that I need to ask for your authorization for. One is a resolution authorizing the submission of the application, and the second is to begin the process of getting appraisals for any sections that would have easement needs for the trail. So the grant application will be for the Glacial Edge Trail, for the downtown and riverfront sections, as well as up to the Minnesota State Campus. So starting in Veterans Park through downtown, through the dairy site, and then up St. Andrews Street by the museum and to M-State Campus is our plan. And that's for, portions would be on-road trail, portions would be new multi-use trail, based on the master plan guidelines for the trail from the Glacial Edge Trail Master Plan. The application is due July 31st, so we have a couple months to get it together, but requesting authorization to submit the application and to begin the process of looking at the appraisals for the easement sections.
Ryan, what's the timing on the appraisals? Does that comes during the application process, or?
It's best to get it done before we apply, so.
So they know how much do we need funding?
Right. In our application will be costs for any easement acquisitions, so they'd like to know what that cost is as we apply.
I'll make that, Your Honor. I'd also like to add something, but go ahead.
You guys, okay, we have a motion, offer a resolution in a second. Okay, go ahead, Rod.
When we originally talked about, when we planned out the original route for the Glacial Edge Trail in our first submission, we had a bridge likely going across somewhere close to the Old River Milling Company, or whatever. In the meantime, we looked at other sites for a bridge. One of the selling points to me is the fact that we have a trail that people walk on here, the River Walk, and that part of this can actually allow us to repair the River Walk without tapping deeply into city funds to do so, so that it's going over an existing trail and allowing us to repair something that needs repair. My question is, and we look at this, and I know it's just sort of a detail, but it does affect some of the River Walk. We've looked at funding by the LCCMR for the bridge upstream, and if we did that, of course, we would not be including the two blocks going down here, you know, from, or two and a half, whatever it is, you know, to the River, or to the corner on the bridge underneath Union. So as we look at that funding and we submit a plan, are we allowed to submit, or can we submit? And I think it's possible that we could say two options here that would allow us, in case we got the funding, the flexibility to do either one. Does that make sense, question?
We have.
Find if we have that option, or?
We have the option, both routes are identified in the master plan. We, from other funding applications and feedback we've gotten, it's best to have one single detailed route identified in the plan, but both options are still on the table according to our master plan.
And I realize there's one option preferable, because I'm on the district committee, but my question is if we can make sure it's okay on this one section, since we don't know about the other grants yet, to have an option. And that could be something we talk to Joel about, you know, you know, call, but if it's all right with everybody, that we might, you know, we look at that. I just wanted to make sure that was an option from the master planning and whatever else, just so it's on the table. Because it does affect our costs and our repair and everything else.
We did, tying into this, this legacy funding application, when we did write that LCCMR application a couple months ago, we kind of wrote that stating that we would also be applying for this GMRPTC legacy application that would hopefully fund the trail portions adjacent to that bridge. And in the LCCMR application, we did identify the River Falls crossing option, so we're sort of tied into it with that application, but that's certainly change.
Right. I don't think it matters to the larger granting group, you know, the E-team. It matters to us, that's what I'm saying, that we can, we keep that option open, just so it's clear that we could talk about that.
You all okay with that? Do we have a resolution on the floor? We have a second, any further discussion? Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a discussion on encroachment issues at Godell Park, and I'll call on city administrator Andrew Bremseth.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Wednesday, we talked about the issues that we're having up in Godell Park specifically related to 1420 Bren Bay Drive. And at that meeting, the committee put a motion forward recommending the council act on surveying the area in question, asking the property owners to vacate the property in question that is part of the encroachment, and also to address other encroachments in private docks that are located in Godell Park. And this evening, if the council still wants to move in that direction, we would need a resolution to that effect. Otherwise, the city attorney and myself would stand by for questions if anybody has any additional concerns or thoughts related to this particular issue.
I know there's some people in the audience too, so if anyone in the audience, I think this would be a time, we had the discussion on Wednesday morning. Brian, Tom, do you guys have any other things you'd like to add to the discussion since the discussion on Wednesday morning?
Mayor and councilman, I had a chance to have Councilman Rooper come over last night and take a look at it, and I appreciate you doing that. And Councilman Speedo, thank you too for coming out and taking a look at it. So, you know, I think you know the situation. It would just be nice to have some resolution to this so that we know what we can put, I guess, in our disclosures, you know, if we're trying to sell our home. The only thing, you know, I would really like to be able to maintain the property if nothing else. That would be very nice to be able to do that, to continue to mow and to continue to clean up the shoreline as weeds come in. So, you know, I don't know what you're going to decide tonight, but that would be at least a nice thing to be able to do, so, is to have the right to keep it up, so.
Your Honor, members, that would, we would be comfortable with that if the property owner wanted to maintain the property in question. Our insurance would cover that if they were doing it with our approval. The only thing that I would caution them, I guess, is that this, part of this area is obviously on public property, and the public could use the parcel. So if they're maintaining it and it's attracting people there, then they'll have to decide, I guess, if they want to continue to do that or not. But we don't have any issue with the property owner maintaining the property.
You know, again, I've been maintaining it for 14 years, and we've never had anybody come onto the, to that area of the park. So, because there's.
Who knows if they will?
Now they know they can.
This is probably just going to go away, you know, I mean, yeah, so.
There's a giant, like, largemouth bass hole right out from. I'm just kidding.
Your Honor, I just want to address, one other thing. We were in Holland, Michigan, and there's a similar situation where someone has purchased a large piece of property, and then there's public property along there, and they've allowed, right away, the public, the people still maintain that, so it's kind of a joint agreement, just like we're talking about. And I think they solved the liability issues or whatever, and so I just think that that is the best way to do it, and allow you to use it as you want to, with the public's knowledge that they can go there. It's not off limits, but there can't be any permanent structures there or docks or anything like that. Yeah, so I, it's the best way to go. Do you need an introduction to that ordinance?
Resolution.
Resolution, I'll introduce that.
Your Honor, I'll second, but I want a clarification. Vacation is to vacate the docks. You know, I looked at your pictures online, you've got a really nice place out there. Everything just, could you move that 37 feet? You own that, I mean, is that what you probably plan on doing, is moving it to the northwest? Is that what it would be?
You know, what I would do is probably remove one of the dock, the wooden dock that's to the south, and it's my understanding that you're going to come out and survey, and then everybody would know where exactly that 37 and a half feet is. And so, you know, the main thing, I don't want to lose access to the lake for where my main dock is right now, because to the north of that is a wood retaining wall, and it would be very difficult to gain access to the lake if I had to go over that retaining wall and down to the lake, so. But I believe where my dock is right now is within that 37 and a half feet.
As long as it's within that 30, I don't have a problem with that.
So we'll get out there and survey, survey, and I'll. So the resolution is to direct the city attorney to.
Just basically to engage a surveyor to establish the park boundaries and instruct the staff to enforce the park boundaries.
Right.
Is there one clear, resolution? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of $835,985, and $0.85. And if there's any questions, I'll direct them to our city finance director.
I'll call out for it, Your Honor.
Second, I'll have a resolution. Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it, or second, okay. I have a question, Your Honor. Can I ask a question about it?
Yep, go ahead, Rod.
Thanks. Increased concession bags, 50 bucks. Are we in the concession business?
We are.
Uh-huh.
Out of DeLagoon, and then what that is, that's cash bag, so that's the change fund that's put in there. You know, you bring it in, reconcile that out, so we needed to add a bag.
Ooh.
So.
Okay.
It's not gone, it's just in a bag now.
You have to get that back, though, remember, that's just, right?
Of course.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports this evening. There are also no reports from staff or administrative officers. There's no old or unfinished business. Under new business, we have a resolution authorizing submission of a West Central Initiative Community Change Makers Grant. Well, I'll call on Rod Speedo.
Yes, thanks, Your Honor. In working with WCI, we've got the opportunities of city to apply for up to $5,000 grant. There's been discussion about this grant, so just so you're clear that this $5,000 requires participating groups in the community to come up with the other five. We do have some already, some talk about that, but we thought we would just, at this point, let you, inform you of that, that if we use the grant, then we have to come up with some other matches to make that $5,000 fully usable, so $10,000 total. The grant is relating to Strong Towns Initiative, which is basically a fiscally responsible way of looking at our planning, that we put the most planning into the areas where we have the best infrastructure and the least amount of additional cost to maintain that infrastructure. If any of you are familiar with Strong Towns Initiative, that's, they have a lot of different things, but that's basically what it's about, and it would be informative, educational. It doesn't set policy for us. It allows us to participate in something that would say, "Here's an option in terms of our planning in certain areas where we may benefit from expertise like this." And if you have any questions more, I think Wayne is quite up on that. If I missed something, Wayne, is that close enough? Okay, so that's.
Is it an equal match, or is there a limit either way there, Wayne?
Good evening, Your Honor, councilmembers, Councilmember Abbott. Yes, it's a one-to-one match, so it's, the Community Change Maker Grant Program will fund up to half of the project.
Thanks. Any other questions? If not, we would need a resolution authorizing submission. Rod, offer that.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. We will also need to approve the audit this evening that was recently completed and presented this evening, earlier this evening by Bergen KDB. So if there's any questions on the audit, if not, I'll offer a resolution to accept it. Jim, Scott, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There is no other business that I'm aware of to come before the council this evening. I'd just like to remind everyone of June 14th, 7:00 a.m., Forward Fergus Falls will have its community celebration at Legacy Hall, 7:00 a.m. There'll be breakfast, there'll be a presentation, so hopefully the council and hopefully many of the public are able and willing to join us that morning as well. Thursday, June 14th, 7:00 a.m., Legacy Hall. Summerfest is this weekend, Summerfest, I forgot, I'm sorry.
Fireworks.
Fireworks Saturday night. At the levee. At the levee, starting around dusk, probably around. At the Levy, starting around dusk, probably around 9:30.
9:30.
9:30 at the Levy, Saturday night.
And the parade is downtown.
Starting at 6 o'clock, Saturday evening, 6 o'clock. And Summerfest is Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
At the Kirkbread Grounds. Correct? So hopefully, that's always, everyone looks forward to that every year, so. We're going to have fireworks this year, the parade's downtown, and Friday and Saturday at the Kirkbread, so hopefully we'll see you there. Rod, did you have...
Well, I had a resident ask me about the camping, the summer's coming, and the camping facilities that we have at DeLagoon, and making sure they're up to, you know, they're usable. And also concerns about, does the city have any plans for expanding camping or allowing us to have more facilities?
We'd love to.
And I just wanted to bring it as a resident's concern. I'm not saying we have to do anything with it or not, but I just want everyone to know that that was brought up from someone in my ward, so.
Thank you.
Just tell them, Rod, we have that master plan, that plan for that. How many sites, as a number guy?
I don't remember how many sites, but...
50 or 60 sites. It was a process we did, right, when you first got on, so? We did it before you got on, so.
All right, we are adjourned.
Amy, did you get that on?
I did. I was on a kombucha bar. There was 16 kombuchas on top.
Did you make them all, make them all up?
Yeah.
Did you get a little salad?
I did a flight, yes, I did a flight, so I could try four.
I'm going to call the Port Authority meeting order. And we have, first thing is the approval of the minutes. I believe we have a quorum here, so do you want to take roll call for that, or?
We don't need the roll call, we just need a motion and a second.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion and a second.
I'll offer that motion, just a second.
Thank you. Tom? All in favor of accepting the motion?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, now we'll call on Amy to give us updates on the listed property by Century 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Speedall. Commissioners, as you recall, recently we have listed some of the Port Authority properties with Century 21, specifically the parcels that are shovel-ready certified on Progress Drive, as well as a near-development-ready parcel on Wyron's Road. To give an update to the commissioners of the marketing and leads that have been generated to date, we do have representatives from Century 21, Leslie Flukestead and Charlie Brew, who are here this evening to provide some information to the commissioners on the marketing and listing of those parcels to date. So I'll turn it over to them.
Hi.
Hi.
Good to have this opportunity to be here, and thank you for letting Century 21 Vista market your properties here.
I'll jump in for a second. We're going to just break it down. Charlie's going to cover, basically, we heard from the last time that you would prefer not to know the clicks. Like, a lot of times when we are telling people, we update, this is how many clicks, this is this property, receive this. We're going to give a little bit of a background on the marketing, and then also maybe statistics that are very useful to you to know what the flow of a commercial lot sale is year-to-date, et cetera.
So we do believe online marketing is the most important, and that's where, in residential, certainly, we see most of the leads come through online marketing. And so our listings are on our local MLS, Midwest Minnesota MLS, and we've also put it on the Fargo MLS, so realtors in Fargo could look up information on these two quite easily and maybe get moving down from there. Also, put them on a national site, CoStar LoopNet, which is exclusively commercial, so the lots are there, and got every, every commercial real estate site available is linked up with our Century 21 Vista and so on. Put them on Craigslist. If we haven't, we will, I mean, we're working towards that. I've made a little video up and put that out on Facebook, and, you know, some of that social media, get some of that going, and got some interest through that. There's an AdWorks that we've put on that will lead to a link, actually, on my website, but it will tell more about the site. So a lot of what we're doing is with the online and so on, so we have ties with Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and all those things, so.
Yeah, and in addition to that, usually kind of what we do like to do is an approach with also paper and postcard media and just good old-fashioned networking with companies. So I think it would be wise for us to attend a few morning club meetings, also talking to a few more companies. Always, this commercial approach has been as a group, so we've got Tim Moore, Patrick Moore, ourselves, the whole company. We have envisioned that maybe what will happen with these shovel-ready lots would be somebody that has a small outfit, maybe in an outline part of the county, ready to move to Fergus, do something larger scale, so. We have been networking. The pace at which these lots sell, there was one commercial lot sold in the last year-to-date, and that was my sale. I'm not trying to brag, but it was just the one, which was Solan True. And I'm going to pull the other statistics up, too. There were eight commercial sales totaled for buildings and land in year-to-date 2017, and there were, there are 14 commercial lots available active right now. So our pace is slow. I'm not trying to set it up that that should be your expectation, but I'm sure you're well aware, that is sort of the flow of it. Would like to hear from you in terms of what you would like to see. I do think the data clicks is useful, because that helps us determine if pricing's, with lots, it's not so much, residential's very easy to calculate if we need to price reduce, because if it's not moving, it's a necessity, somebody's got to have it, we need to reduce. That's not so clear with lots. Reducing them doesn't make them sell. So I think it is a little trickier. It takes patience, it always has with any kind of lot, commercial or otherwise. But I think we are pretty out there. The one building that was on Wyron's Road, we wanted knocked off right away, because that would seemingly be a better deal to have this building down the lot, and Patrick Moore of our company did sell that this winter. So that's gone as competitive. There really isn't anything even like what we are offering, so it's not that we're getting beat by someone else, or we've lost those buyers. Other questions?
No, it sounds like you're grinding away.
Pause. Thank you.
We know it takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
Yes, the pictures are on there. We did hire, now that it's nice and a little more bloomed than when we took the listing, which was still winter, even though it was supposed to be spring, we usually hire Steve Jansen with his drone to go out there and do a few more. We've got some beautiful photos, but we could add some more. That's a good suggestion. Question, on the loop, that is for the city, the public announcement, could we run even just Charlie's video that he created, giving detail about said lots? Would that be acceptable use of the... Oh, like, the public television access? Sorry, thank you, peg. Yeah. Okay, very good.
Good suggestions, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the review of an Norgren property. Right.
Commissioner Speedall, commissioners, the, included in your packet was a memo from City Attorney Niccolmo on a process to hold a public auction for the Norgren parcels that we've discussed at the last couple of meetings. Just to highlight a couple of pieces that we will work on additional details if this general outline is acceptable to the commissioners. So we have determined the parcels that's been talked about. I don't believe there's any suggested change on the two parcels that we have been discussing as far as sale. We would be working to, if this outline is acceptable, to create a more detailed timeline on how this would work. We have to consider the current farming activities and timing of an actual sale in conjunction with the lease activities that we have on that land right now. We have provided notice to that farmer. There is a six-month notice period prior to November 1st that we have to provide, and we have provided that notice that we will not be renewing his lease for the 2019 growing season for the Port Authority East parcels. Excuse me. And so that, but knowing that we will need, we will have some excess land that we'll ultimately have to, we would look to lease out in addition, but, you know, not until we know who the buyer of the other land is. It didn't make sense to continue his on any of that portion of the Port Authority East land. So we would be creating a, you know, a notice that would include the acreage that we've been talking about, tillable amounts certainly would be critical, and establishing that minimum reserve bid over the coming months. And point number seven in the memo, just wanted to highlight that, the discussion of whether it should be sold as individual parcels or in one piece. And I believe it'd make more sense to look at it as a one piece, but, well, I take that back. One parcel is split by the Otter Tail Power Easement area, so there's some differences there that we could maybe look at, and we are researching more information about that Otter Tail Power Easement at this point, so we need to get a better understanding. It's a very strong easement, I think "strong" is the correct word, but a...
Restrictive?
Restrictive easement. And so we want to make sure we have full understanding of that, so that can be expressed within the notice of sale as well regarding the parcels. So some additional work that we would need to be looking at and would suggest getting further direction from the commission to bring back even further detail as we move forward with this process. So any questions on process of public auction? I'd be happy to take those.
Got it.
No, I...
Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead, Darren.
Was it two, it was two parts, two, two pieces of farmland, right?
Correct. There are, the parcels that we've been reviewing is two separate parcels, though one parcel is divided by that restrictive Otter Tail Power Easement.
Okay, and initially here, the thought was to do it as seven, is it 79 acres or something? Or what was the total acres on both?
150 acres.
150, 79, or whatever it was, 79 in one and whatever balance in the other? Okay.
I don't have that up here with me, but...
So is it usual to have all the land auctioned in one, I guess I'll call it a unit, I'm used to that, but, or is it best, I guess, or is there getting some feedback from what pieces that I've sold in the past, and what method, whether it's split or together, would work best? I think in some aspects, the question is whether you auction off the more attractive piece and give someone the option to match a price on the less attractive piece, if you wanted to go with that, probably if they were the successful bidder, or if you wanted to bid it as one entire unit, one entire piece, or you can bid it in different... I mean, those are, those are, I think, questions that you'll have to answer, you don't have to answer tonight, but those are, those are good questions as to how you can best maximize this, and in some aspects, auctioning off the more attractive piece and then giving an option to match an offer or something like that on the less attractive piece maybe is a better way to do it, because then at least you're selling both for similarly priced. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Scott?
I'd like to see us get all the information we need from you, Amy, and then have a work session and discuss that at a work session, just us, we don't have the staff. Amy should be there, but not the staff, we don't want the staff being there. And I think the auction should be in November when the farming is done, and there's, hopefully they have a good year, so they could spend some money. That's, I think that's the best time to sell. I've asked a few different people for farming, either just first part of December or in November. So I think that we should just kind of plan a work session in August or on this piece and figure out something, figure it out then, and plan to attack, and then head on with it.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, is August the best time, or should we do it in later September? We still have...
I mean, August for us.
Oh, okay.
Just to get a plan for it, to decide how much we're going to spend on, how much we're going to ask for our starting bid, and lay it out, so then they can go after it and advertise the auction, a date, whatever we pick on that work session in August.
Should we ask Lynn to try to set up a date for us? Or Lynn and Amy, or whatever, yeah. Okay. Thank you. I did have one comment on that, but I'll save it for the work session, so, thanks. Number, anything else on that?
Yeah, I just, I would like to highlight the brief memo I handed out. There was a question on the expenses incurred to date regarding the Norgren property. And so Finance Director Sonmore and Port Authority staff worked to pull some of the data. So total costs incurred, $386,000. 299 of that is the land purchase itself, as well as $40,000 for a relocation of a home that was on the original land. So the bulk of it was, is related to the purchase and then that home relocation, the moving expenses associated with that. The balance of the expenses are a lot of tire removals, you know, other debris disposal and removal costs within those years. There's been two land transfers of the original property have taken place. One is for, that's a small sliver that's south of 111, kind of on the southeastern of the curve at the property, that is used for the fire department, and then a larger portion attributed to the Ferber Park land on the western edge of this property. So two land transfers as well. And then a note of the farm lease that we have received to date, and over the last 15-year time period, is just shy of 150,000 or 146,576 in lease revenues, farm lease revenues that we have obtained on this property. So just an overview of the expenses and revenues that we have received to date for that parcel.
Okay. So just wrapping it up, is everyone in agreement that we could do an August work session? And then you're in agreement that in November, early November, before...
We could change that in August, two minutes.
Yeah.
Just to throw it out there, just the information I asked for.
Okay, we'll plan on that, then.
Okay, so just an overview, we will develop a schedule anticipating a November auction date, if that, you know, back into that with the other items from a schedule perspective, and have that reviewed at an August work session by the Port Authority.
All right. Is there any other late business? I don't think so.
If I could add, the other works, the work session that's listed on the agenda...
Okay.
Was in addition, not referencing the Norgren property, I was going to suggest that the Port Authority hold a work session in the coming month, likely July would be our timeframe. We do have some other items coming forward, but to have a general discussion about understanding the powers and the abilities and items that the Port Authority could be using that maybe they haven't in the past and/or done in ways that were looked at differently. So I would suggest we have that, and then how can we better communicate what the Port Authority does and what it can do, you know, coming out of that session. So just wanted to get direction from the commissioners to look to schedule that work session as well. So at this point, we'd be looking at having a July work session on more of a broad overview, and then specific in August on the Norgren auction process.
I think there's no question that we need to be updated on the value, the use, the authority of, you know, of the port, so I think that, is everyone okay with that? Very good. All right.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else, then motion adjourned?
Second.
Aye, aye.